And that name is Scott Efer. We have a nomination for Scott Efer. Any other nominations?
For the 2025 year, Chairman of the County Commissioners.
Thank you, sir.
I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you all for putting your trust in me and we're going to, now we're going to ask for openly nominations for Vice Chair. And do I have any nominations for Vice Chair?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Chairman. I nominate this person because I've witnessed this Commissioner for the last two years, some things we disagreed on, some things she brought to the table that needed to be brought to the table. And so at this time, I'd like to nominate Patty Crump as Vice Chair.
Okay, I have Patty Crump down for Vice Chair. Any other nominations for Vice Chair?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would like to nominate Brandon King as Vice Chair. I do appreciate the nomination, though.
Okay, I have Brandon King down as another nomination for Vice Chair. Is there any other nominations? If not, can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm moved that they be closed.
You be closed. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Have a second, Phil? So I'll take a, everybody want to close the nominations, say aye? All right, we're gonna take this in order. All those for Mr. Patty Crump for Vice Chair, please raise your hand. I've got three. And all those in favor of Mr. Brandon King for Vice Chair, raise your hand. Or three. Congratulations, Mr. King, Vice Chair. Okay, now. We have on the agenda the approval of some public bonds. And I need a motion to approve renewal of the following public bonds. For Finance Officer Toby Henson, $1 million, expires June 9th, '25. Register Deed Jenny Helms, $50,000, expires December 1st, 2025. And the Tax Administrator Clinton Swearingen, $100,000, to expire October 28th, 2025. Do I have a motion for these bonds?
A motion, Chairman.
I have a motion by Commissioner Efer. Second by Commissioner Hatley. All in favor of approving the bonds, raise your hand or say aye. All opposed? Pass at seven zero. Now, we're gonna have openings for the boards. I have committees for the Chairman, for the Commissioners to serve on. And I have placed what I have been working on at each one's location. And if that's suitable, I would like to get a motion to accept that. Motion by Vice Chair King to approve it. Do I have a second? And Commissioner Mills second it. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Pass at seven zero.
Mr. Chair? Just for transparency, should we read off the, just wondering if we can, do you mind if we read off the?
I don't mind. I'll be glad to read those off.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Number one is for the Economic Development Commission, two Commissioners. I have Mr. Bill Lawhorn and Mr. Brandon King. For Consolidated Human Services Board, I have two Commissioners. Miss Patty, Chairman, Commissioner Patty Crump, Commissioner Brandon King. For the Library Board Trustee, I have Commissioner Scott Efer. For Airport Authority, I have two Commissioners. I have Commissioner Trent Hatley and Commissioner Brandon King. For Chairman of the Fire District Commission, I have Mr. Trent Hatley. For Members of the Senior Services Board, I have Commissioner Billy Mills. I have, for the Members for the Rural Planning Organization, RPO Board, I have Mr. Billy Mills. And for an alternate for the Rural Planning Organization, I have Scott Efer. Members of the Stanley Water and Sewer Authority, I have the regular member, Commissioner Trent Hatley. And alternate for the Sewer Authority is Mike Barbie. I have number nine, the Member of the Central Indiana Council of Government. I have Mike Barbie on this. And for alternate for Central Carolina, I have Commissioner Bill Lawhorn. For Partnership's Behavior Health Board, I have Commissioner Scott Efer. And for the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, I have Commissioner Patty Crump. We have gotten that down. Now we have to approve our established meeting dates for 2025. And all right, here we go. This is the established meeting dates for the 2025 Board of Commissioners. We meet on the first and third Mondays of each month, except for May, June, July, August, September, and December, as indicated below. And our times will start at 6:00 PM. Proposed meeting schedules follow us. Our first one is Monday, January the 6th, and Tuesday, January 21st. Monday, February 3rd, and Monday, February 17th. Monday, March 3rd, and Monday, March 17th. Monday, April 7th, and Monday, April 21st. Monday, May 12th, Monday, June 2nd, Monday, July 7th, Monday, August 4th, Tuesday, September 2nd. And that has been rescheduled because of a holiday. And then we have Monday, October 6th, and Monday, October 20th. Monday, November 3rd, and Monday, November 17th, and then Monday, December 1st. I have all of those, and I'd like to get, look those over, and if you have any scheduling problems, let me know. Otherwise, I'd seek approval for those dates. I have a motion by Commissioner King. Second by Commissioner Hatley. All in favor? All opposed? Now, we have 2025 county holiday schedule. And we have New Year's Day is observed on Wednesday, January the 1st. Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday, Monday, January 20th. Good Friday, Friday, April 18th. Memorial Day, Monday, May 26th. Independence Day, Friday, July the 4th. Labor Day, Monday, September 1st. Veterans Day, Tuesday, November 11th. Thanksgiving will be Thursday, November 27th, and Friday, November 28th. And Christmas will be Wednesday, December 24th, Thursday, December 25th, and Friday, December 26th. Do I have any changes to that? Everything look good? I'll seek a motion to accept.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we accept the 2025 county holiday schedule.
Commissioner Efer, have a second? Second, Commissioner Crump. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Here's seven zero. Now, I have an announcement to make that says during any regular meeting of the Board, the County Commissioners, in order to act in their capacity as Board of Governors for the Greater Baden Water and Sewer District, and for the Piney Point Water District, may at their discretion recess a Commissioner's regular meeting and reconvene as the Board of Governors of either of the above two entities in order to conduct business and matters related to that entity. We'll go back to our regular agenda. Okay, now, since we don't have anything, I have the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Would y'all please bow your head? Your Heavenly Father, we thank thee for allowing us to serve the needs of the county. And please bless and look after and guide us and direct us in the needs of the business as it will to suit you. Please bless and protect all the employees and citizens of Stanley County, our armed forces, and our police department. Just please look after them, guide them. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. No staff.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now I'm seeking for any approval, any adjustments to the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the agendas presented.
Approved by Commissioner Vice Chair King. Any seconds? Second by Commissioner Crump. All in favor? All yes. Okay. Now, we have Retirement Awards Presentation. And I think we have that up there, so I'll go down to the stand down here. All right. Could I ask all the Commissioners to come down and join me in this? We've had some faithful employees of the county, and they're now seeking to go on and do brighter and better things. So the first I have on the list is Mr. David Fisher. And Mr. David Fisher Jr. has been dedicated employee of the county utilities for over 20 years. Having joined the department on September 1st, 2003, he has deep roots in the community and have lived in Stanley County since August, 1961. David attended Norwood Elementary and graduated from South Stanley High School in '75. He furthered his education by obtaining a degree in computers from Stanley Community College in 2004. And throughout his career, David has held position of distribution, collections, operation, and been instrumental in the maintenance and repair of water distribution and sewer collection systems within the county. His commitment to professional development is evident. He attended various certification schools, running through the field, and successfully passed all exams. Since 2007, he has served as operator in responsible charge, ORC, for cross connection control and has maintained water sampling records as required by North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. David is married to Sarah Ellis Fisher, with whom he has shared his life since September 28th, 1986. Together, they have two stepchildren, Jason Pinyan and Allison Neal, along with eight grandchildren. In his retirement acknowledgement, David expressed gratitude to both current and past County Commissioners for providing him with the education and tools necessary to perform his job efficiently. He considers it a privilege to have served the people and the government of Stanley County over his extensive career. David, would you come forward, please? This is a little token of our appreciation. And I've got a little commendo in there for you. And we just want to sincerely thank you for everything you've done for the county.
Well, it's been a pleasure.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
We'll get one late. We're just getting one with all three of you.
Next, we have a lady I know, Ms. Deitra Turner. She's been a dedicated employee for 31 years with Stanley County. Really gonna be missed in soil water. But Deitra Turner was, has been dedicated, has impressed you 31 years of service to Stanley County. Having been hired on November 15th, 1993. She has built a diverse career across multiple departments. Spending five years in the Finance Department, 16 years in the Sheriff's Department, 10 years for Utilities Department. Deitra's lifelong connection to the community is evident, as she has lived in Stanley County her entire life. Deitra graduated from West Stanley High School in 1980 in pursuit of higher education at Stanley Community College, where she earned a degree in data processing in '82. She has demonstrated a strong commitment to professional development, obtaining numerous certifications related to her job. Throughout her career, Deitra has exemplified loyalty and reliability, taking great pride in her work and contribution to the organization. She has also served as a clerk in the Stanley Water and Sewer Authority, showcasing her versatility and commitment to public service. Deitra has been married to her husband Ron for 42 years. And together, they have one child, Lacy Turner. And her willingness to assist whatever and whenever needed has made her a valued member of the Stanley County team. In her retirement acknowledgement, Deitra expressed heartfelt gratitude to both the current and past Stanley County Commissioners for providing her with opportunities throughout her career, and she considers it an honor to have served for the people and the government of Stanley County over her lengthy tenure. Come on up, Deitra, thank you. This is a little token of our appreciation. And there's some goodies in the box. I think it's tough to help you out when it works. Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Ms. Angie Wintz. Angie began her career with Stanley County DSS in November of 1994, when she was hired as an income maintenance case worker in the adult Medicaid unit. In 2008, she transitioned to a daycare case worker position for three years before returning to adult medical. Angie was promoted to the lead case worker for the adult unit in 2016. Her hard work and dedication has helped many new and seasoned employees do their best. She has faced many challenges in her time at DSS, and she has overcome them with maintaining a positive attitude. Her contributions have made a significant impact with the adult Medicaid unit, and she will be truly missed. She has created many lasting friendships along the way. We know she looks forward to this new chapter in retirement and the extra time being spent with family, especially her grandchildren. Congratulations in her retirement. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Thank you all. Okay. Next on the agenda is public comments. We have one person signed up. And it's like Paul something or the other. Yeah, Paul that lives on 619 Vic Street. I think this is for the retirement. I think he's already left. I see retirement listed there at the bottom now. All right. Does anyone else in the audience want to have anything they want to say in the public comments? Okay. If not, we're gonna move on to resolution and support of the American 250 North Carolina Committee. The Department of Natural Resources is encouraging each county or the state to create a committee responsible for developing events and activities. And who is in charge of that? Is Mr. William, oh. We'll just get you to come up.
The agenda says Bane Jones, and he is unable to be with us tonight. So I'm also on the committee, or the proposed committee, if you all will pass the resolution tonight. My name is Renee Van Horn. I am the Executive Director of the Stanley County Arts Council. So as Commissioner Barbie just stated, in 2026, America will be celebrating its 250th birthday. We have an opportunity as a county to develop a committee which will entitle us to grant funding opportunities, as well as state support, to help celebrate this milestone in our, in our country. So we are coming to you tonight to present the resolution, and hopefully that it will pass tonight, because the grant deadline is approaching very quickly. And the first step is actually to develop the committee. Just a little background on the committee, it will be the Historical Society, which Mr. Jones is the President of the Stanley County Historical Society, so he will be the Project Director. I will be the Budget Director, representing the Stanley County Arts Council. Other members that will be represented on this committee is the Stanley County Schools with Mr. Lynn Plummer. We have Megan Sullivan with the History Center. We have Robin Davis with the Central Business District in Norwood. We have Ann Harwood with the Daughters of the American Revolution. And we've asked Les Young, we haven't gotten confirmation, to represent the Sons of American Revolution. We have, ADDC will be represented. And from the arts perspective, we will have Carmella Hedrick from the Stanley County Concert Band, Becky Wall from Stanley County Corral, and Lisa So the resolution, would you all like me to actually read the resolution? Is that the formality? "A Resolution of Stanley County, North Carolina, Supporting the America 250 NC Committee for the United States Semi-Quintcentennial. Whereas Roy Cooper, Governor of North Carolina, created America 250 NC to plan, encourage, develop, and coordinate the commemoration of the 250th anniversary of the United States and North Carolina's integral role in that event and the role of its people on the nation's past, present, and future. And whereas, America 250 NC has a mission to engage all North Carolinians in all 100 counties through their many signatures and officially recognized programs, projects, and events over the commemoration by inspiring future leaders and celebrating North Carolina's contributions to the nation over the last 250 years. And whereas, by adoption of America 250 NC's mission, Stanley County Committee is officially formed to achieve the goals of America 250 NC. Now therefore, be it resolved that the County of Stanley hereby endorses America 250 NC and its mission. And resolved, the County of Stanley officially establishes an America 250 NC Committee made up of a diverse group of citizens to work with America 250 NC on any and all activities. The participants of the Stanley County Committee will be strictly voluntary roles, and there will be no compensation for participation. It is further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to the North Carolina Legislative delegation and the America 250 NC Committee, adopted this second day of December, 2024." Thank you very much.
That sounds good. I appreciate that. What's the will of the board?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move for approval of the resolution as presented.
Motion by Commissioner Trump, second by Commissioner Hatley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven oh. Okay, now we have, next on the agenda is the Stanley County Water and Sewer Authority Board Appointments, and that'd be Mr. Dwayne Wingo.
Thank you, Commissioner Barbie, and other commissioners, or Chairman Barbie, excuse me. The Stanley County Water and Sewer Authority Board of Directors has two positions that will expire on January 3rd, 2025. These positions must be filled either by appointing new board members or by reappointing the current board members. Specifically, the term of Board Chairman, Mr. William Bill Rigsby and Mr. Billy Franklin or Frank Lee will both conclude on this date, and both have stated they would like to be considered for reappointment. Mr. Lee currently serves on the Stanley County Board of Adjustments, whose term will expire on June 30th, 2025, and on the Voluntary Agricultural District Board, whose term will expire on July 31st, 2027. We have received an application from Mr. David L. Jackson, who is interested in joining the board as a new member. Mr. Jackson resides at 32543 Valley Drive in Abomarle. The appointments for these positions will be for a term of two years concluding on January 3rd, 2027. This structure is designed to ensure staggered terms of the existing board members. The Stanley County Board of Commissioners will need to select two of the three applicants to fill these vacancies on the Stanley County Water and Sewer Authority Board. Staff requests the Stanley County Board of Commissioners proceed with a vote on these appointments.
Thank you. Sounds good. All the commissioners had a chance to look over the appointees. Do I have any motions?
Mr. Chairman, are we going to do this in a group block, or are we going to do one at a time?
Let's just do them one at a time.
I'd like to nominate David Jackson for a new term. This is the only board he's signed up for, and it'd be good to have some new people on boards.
David Jackson. Okay, have a second?
I'll say.
All in favor of Mr. David Jackson? Please say aye. Against? Mr. David Jackson has one of the appointees. Next, I have two others. You have any motion for the others?
Nominate Bill Rigsby.
I have a nomination for Bill Rigsby. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner King. All in favor of Billy for the appointment? Say aye. Opposed? Billy has the appointment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dwayne, I would ask that when you, I'm sure you're going to call and talk to these gentlemen.
Yes.
When you do, express to Mr. Lee, we appreciate his service, but also, he's on multiple boards, and therefore, you know, I think he's on like two, two other boards. Express to him, but we do appreciate his.
Yes, sir. I will. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. Okay. Next, we have the Senior Services Advisory Board Appointments, and the presenter is Ms. Pamela Sullivan. Hey, Pam.
Good evening, Chairman Barbie and fellow commissioners. I'm here tonight to appoint for, for you guys to appoint four new members to the Senior Services Advisory Board. We had four members rotating off, and I'd like to acknowledge and thank them. Gail Barbie, Ann Louder, Kent Trolle, and Christina Vaughn served the Senior Services Advisory Board for numerous terms, and we'd just like to thank them for their service. We'd also like to ask the commissioners to review the applications presented in front of you, and let you know that the board met and looked over these as well, and they are recommending for the four new appointments Antoine Hamilton, Isabel Howard, Dawn Melton, and Teresa Wagner to be appointed to serve on this board. So tonight, I would ask that respectfully for you to review those applicants and appoint them for a three-year term.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve Antoine Hamilton, Isabel Howard, Dawn Melton, and Teresa Wagner as suggested by Ms. Sullivan for the Senior Services Advisory Board Appointment.
Okay. I have a motion.
Second.
Have a second with Vice Chair King. All approve? Yeah? All disapprove? Motion carries seven oh.
Thank you. Look forward to seeing you guys on Friday.
The ethics is coming up now. Mr. Andy Lucas is presenter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. This is your ethics policy that has to be reaffirmed each year. I'll be happy to answer any questions, but it's been before most of you multiple times. And it's really, it's prescribed by state statute, so we just, several years ago, when the state statute was established for this ethics to be approved, we took the advice of the County Association and drafted that. But I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have regarding the ethics policy.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the code of ethics as submitted.
Okay, I have a motion to approve. You have a second. Second by Commissioner Trump. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries seven oh. Now before us, we have the consent agenda. I'm sure everybody's looked over it. I need a motion for that.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner Eifert. Have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawhorn. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries seven oh. Now before us, we have the consent agenda. I'm sure everybody's looked over it. I need a motion for that.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner Eifert. Have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawhorn. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Okay. Now comes time for board members' comments, and I'll start with Commissioner Trump.
Well, I just want to congratulate you, Mr. Chair, and congratulate you, Commissioner King, Vice Chair King. I want to congratulate you too, Mr. Mills. Very excited that you'll be joining us on this board, and congratulate you as well, Mr. Eifert.
Thank you, Ms. Trump. Ms. Hatley. At the end, Mr. Commissioner Mills, any comment?
I know that most of you, when you look up here and you think, oh, it's kind of dry, but we made, we started right around 5:00 in the day, and the staff here, look at this. I mean, this is what they, this is what Tyler, I guess Tyler had prepared, and Ms. Underwood had made a presentation that was just incredible. So behind, before we come in, there's a lot of work that the people do, and it's just, it's amazing to me. That's the first thing I noticed. The biggest thing that's on my mind right now is, we need your prayers, because we don't, there's no way we can, you know, know all the answers, but if you just pray that God will give us discernment and wisdom for the challenges, because we can't control those. And, you know, you supported us in the elections. Please support us now, because my two grandsons just left, and I look at them, and, you know, I can see the end of the road, but I want to, I want something for them that whenever I leave this earth, that they'll have something that at least morally and values, and I'm going to hush, but I just, I wanted to thank all the people that came. By the way, if you're hungry, I don't know if you hear the noise right here, but there's like cheesecake and roast brownie pie right over here. So the last thing, I see a couple of the young, future people that's going to get involved with leadership, and we need that. If you look around and you go to some of the, whether it's Democrat or Republican, you go, there's no young people. And I shudder to think sometimes, you know, why do they not get involved, where they see a lot of things, but if we have young people that can get involved with leadership, we need to get those young people and get them interested, and let them know it's not all bad. I'm done.
Commissioner King, Vice Chair King.
Mr. Chairman, congratulations on a well-deserved chairmanship. I look forward to serving with you, and I know you'll do great things. Congratulations, Mr. Bill Mills. It's good to have you up here, Billy. It's a welcome change. Thank you for being here. Thank you for putting your name in the hat and going through all you've endured, and it'll be worth it. Thank you so much. Congratulations, Commissioner Eifert. Very, very clean race, and proud of you, and you've done a great job. Everybody else, thank you for being here, and we look forward to serving you all.
Okay, Commissioner Eifert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations. Congratulations, Vice Chairman King. You can't sit up here and do this job without support of your family, and my wife, Tracy, she supports me 100% majority of the time, and I certainly appreciate that. And I want to thank my brother and his wife, Suzanne, for coming out tonight, but our parents always taught us, whatever you do, make it better than the way you found it. And that's what I've been trying to do for the last eight years, and I'll continue to do it the next four years, and I want to thank the voters for getting out and the huge turnout. But we represent, you know, all of Stanley County. So again, I'll do my best to, to work for you guys. We've got a lot of opportunities, we've got a lot of challenges in the next coming year, and I hope that we can work together and get this done. So I'd like to wish everyone out there a Merry Christmas also, and Happy New Year. And Tyler, thank you so much for doing that. I certainly appreciate you swearing this in tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Lawhorn.
Want to thank the three associates that coming up on retirement or have retired already. We've got a bunch of great employees here at the county. They all work hard, and we appreciate their efforts, and when they work, they're working for the citizens of Stanley County. And as a board member, I hope we all vote for the citizens of Stanley County when we make decisions. I welcome Commissioner Mills to the board. You won your race handily, fair and square. Peter will even say that. Welcome. Commissioner Eifert, you're entering into, I think, your third, third term. It's three fours of 12. That's how many years you're going to have by the time you finish, and I'm glad that you're on this commission board. I do recognize the chairman and the vice chair. You've got a job that you need to stay focused on. It's more than just conducting these meetings, which you'll soon find out when Tyler calls and say, hey, I need you to drop by, or send you a text, I need you to drop by. She doesn't mean next week. She means today or tomorrow. So you'll be signing a lot of documents, you will be, Mike. All the committees that we have, we work for the citizens, and we all need to remember that we're here because of the citizens. Those that vote and those that don't vote, we're here to try to make their life as easy as possible, because goodness gracious, this day and time, we all have headaches. I don't know about y'all, but I hear my wife fuss every time she goes to the grocery store. She stopped buying certain products because she said, I'm not going to pay that price. Let's hope that the inflation and the cost and the drill, baby, drill happens, because that will reduce the cost. So I wish, I hope everybody's had a good Thanksgiving. I spent it with my family. Couldn't imagine anybody else I'd rather have spent it with, and I know you probably feel the same way with your family. Jenny, you and Tyler are to be commended for being at all these meetings, these meetings that you could be at home with your daughters, not worried about your husbands. They're old enough to take care of themselves. But Andy, I appreciate you and what you do. Thank everybody, and God bless you.
Thank you, Bill. I want to congratulate Mr. Mills for getting on as commissioner, and congratulate Scott for getting back reelected, and congratulate Commissioner, Vice Chair, Brandon King for being the vice chair. I do appreciate all the help from Tyler and Jenny and Andy. Guys, there's a lot of stuff you guys do behind the scenes, and showed up tonight. Without your help, I couldn't have done a lot of this. And I want to commend Commissioner Lawhorn on the great job he's done this last year as chair, and I appreciate his guidance. I intend to work with everybody on the board and make sure everything's, and do my best to make sure everything is done fairly. And we look after the citizens. That, to me, that is the most important thing that we've got up here, is to look after our citizens. So I thank for the support, and if I could entertain a motion to adjourn, we'll adjourn.
I move.
Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.